We are going to start with the roll call, please. Oh, also really quickly, nope. For council members, the new microphones. It's a little bit hard to tell if the light is on because it's green and it's picking up the lights from underneath. So, but it's similar system and you're welcome to leave them on. There's not as much feedback, but also, you know, if you're going to be drinking water and stuff, you can turn them off so we don't hear that. Anyway, otherwise, same system and they should be working. So, roll call, please. Mayor Dexter? Here. Deputy Mayor Carr? Here. Councilmember French?
Here by phone.
Councilmember McCon?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Present.
Councilmember Schraman-Warren?
Here.
Sorry about the one T. Schraman-Warren. Councilmember Sutts?
Here.
Manager West?
Present.
Attorney Board?
Here.
Thank you. So, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are going to start the evening with a proclamation for International Women's All right, I would like to invite any groups who are here representing. I know we have a couple of members of the League of Women Voters and some of the, another women's group that your name escapes me right now, I'm very sorry, but if you would like to join me up here, that would be lovely. We can mix it up.
Yeah, it'll be.
Okay. And remind me your group.
Women Fest.
Women Fest. Excellent, and that's this week. All right, so I'm going to read the proclamation and then if either of you would like to say a couple of words of either group, that would be great. It's a proclamation in recognition of International Women's Day. Whereas March 8th, 2020 is the 109th International Women's Day, a global celebration of economic, political, and social achievements of women around the world, and a date to recognize the obstacles women still face in the struggle for equal rights and opportunities and their central role in creating positive change. And whereas, the holiday began as National Women's Day, first observed by the U.S. Labor Movement on February 28th, 1909, to honor participants in the 1908 International Ladies' Garment Workers Union Strike. And whereas, International Women's Day was first celebrated on March 19th, 1911, but the date for this annual commemoration was not fixed on March 8th until 1914. And whereas, International Women's Day is a time to reflect on progress made, to call for change, and to celebrate acts of courage and determination by ordinary women who have played an extraordinary role in the history of their countries and communities. And whereas, according to the United Nations website, women earn 23% less than men globally, women occupy only 24% of parliamentary seats, and one in three have experienced physical or sexual violence. And whereas, 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of American women's right to vote. Whereas, International Women's Day 2020 missions include: raising greater awareness about issues impacting women's equality, taking a stance to call out inequality while working to forge more positive action, highlighting and applauding where important gains are being made, and celebrating women's achievements and accomplishments. Now, therefore, I, Kate Dexter, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby celebrate historical, cultural, and political achievements of women and encourage the community to reaffirm their commitment to end gender-based discrimination in all forms. Thank you. So, if either of you would like to just say a quick word. I know the League of Women Voters is doing work this year to celebrate women's suffrage and there's a festival this week, right? So, I'll let you tell us just a quick bit about.
I would just say thank you so much. It's an honor to have a female mayor, Dexter, to be reading this proclamation. And just want to also extend acknowledgement and thanks to all the women that do the hard work every day now and all of those that came before us that fought those battles on our behalf and her grandmothers and her mothers. So, thank you so much. I'm Jessica Hernandez, co-chair of, co-vice chair of the League of Women Voters here in Calhoun County. And this here is Rebecca Miller, my co-vice chair of the League of Women Voters here in Calhoun County.
Hi, I'm Sandy Alp and this is Harper Weiss. I'm the president of Women Fest, organization that's been around for 39 years. And for the last 16 years, this is our 16th year, we have an International Women's Day event, the week of International Women's Day. So, it's tomorrow night at the Olympic Cellars. We raise, it's a soup and bread night, dinner welcome. And we raise awareness about women, both locally and internationally, and raise funds for specific organizations each year. So, we'd love to see you come and we're excited about that.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for joining me up here. All right, so that leads us to our first public comment period. I have a few people signed up. And before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that for the record, we ask you to state your name and whether or not you are a resident of Port Angeles or representing an organization or business within the city. So, the first person I have signed up is Norma Turner.
I won't even need the time where I'm going to be so short. Anyway, I just want to, I am here on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club and I want to take this time to thank you for the advocacy that you did for the Boys and Girls Club during your time in Olympia. I understand that our requests are moving along, so keep reminding them. That's a good idea to move it along. And I also want to check, see if you all got your invitation to the breakfast. It was supposed to be in your box. Oh, good, you got them. Thank you. Let me know if you can come. It'll be fun. You get to meet the youth of the year. And then lastly, in closing, I want to invite all of you at any time you wish. I can arrange for you to have a brief tour of the Boys and Girls Club because we now have walls and we also have a floor for our gym. So, it's really pretty exciting and just give me a call. It works if we go late afternoon, then you don't have to wear a hard hat. So, I'll be happy to give you all a tour. It's quite exciting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have Robert Bocelé. Did I say your name correctly?
Pretty darn close. Didn't know if you were a telemarketer or not. I come to address the city council. My name is Robert Bocelé. I am a resident of Port Angeles. I was born and raised here and so I come here to talk about homelessness just for briefly and from a different point of view than what you normally see in the paper or hear on the radio and things like that. Last, I'm retired, but the prior 17 years before my retirement, I managed approvals here in town. So, I've seen a lot of people of variety, different variety come through. And I also own the groundskeeper for the Shutter Buswhacker Restaurant. And that's kind of where my point of contention comes in because I have to deal with a lot of homeless people and sometimes it's pretty trying. One of the things that I find that I have to deal with is needles. And you have a needle exchange program. I don't know how it works, but I've been in contact with one of your council members and he says that you're on an even keel when it comes to handing out needles or you hand out and what you get back. And he thinks you might even be ahead of the game. These are the last two I've found on the Buswhacker Park and are a lot around surrounding the building. This is, this is about 42 of them that I've found since I've been caretaking property. And I know there's been others that have been found throughout the town and on the waterfront trail and hither and thither. So, I'm not sure where you get your numbers on the needle exchange and I don't understand the policy of it, but what I do think is that people like me and others that find these needles are the forgotten ones. Nobody thinks about me when I'm picking these darn things up. It's just me. And so, you know, it bothers me to no end that I find these and it represents something out there that I just don't think that folks quite understand. Mr. Warren, I'm sorry, is that right? You stated that you were, you know, that it was even across the board. I just can't see how that could possibly be. Maybe it is. Maybe they're important needles from other places. I don't know. That's a mighty short period of time. Well, then let me get to one, another important topic that I can't see why everybody is wrangling over and that's that the homeless people are bussed here in Port Angeles. Who cares? How they get here? If you look and you see motorhomes and cars with people living in them, strewn all about the city, what does it matter if they come here by bus or not? I think that is just a terrible waste of energy to even worry about where they come from. I think that we need to deal with them because they're here and do I get to continue or am I done?
Three minutes. Yep, so your three minutes is up, but we do have a second public comment period at the end of the meeting. If you have time to stay, you're welcome to speak again then.
Three minutes.
You can also email us.
Yeah, that's not quite enough.
And I'd be happy to meet with you further if you want to meet with the County Needle Exchange. And just to clarify, I believe I said that the County Needle Exchange collects back more needles than the street itself.
I come from a Indian park.
Okay. All right, the next person on our list is, thank you Robert for your comments, and the next person is Jane Vanderhoof.
I'm homeless. You got suspended, they'd be killed. Good evening. My name is. Doing anything to protect me. Jane Vanderhoof and I live in Port Angeles. Packing my body bags and when they find me, they can put me in it.
Can you guys take your comment outside so we can listen to the commenter? Thank you.
Should I start over? My name is Jane Vanderhoof and I live in Port Angeles. I'm also on the board of directors of DAM Sense, which is an organization that has just applied for a 501(c)(3) with the federal government. And our mission is to do, is to help the Bonneville Power Administration and the Army Corps of Engineers to begin the process of breaching the four lower Snake River dams because, and I sent all of you a resolution a couple of days ago requesting that you support a resolution to, well, it could be to anybody. It could be to Governor Isley, it could be to the Bonneville Power Administration, it could be to the Army Corps of Engineers and to, apparently, we do not need any legislation to affect this change. And the science is already 20 years old. The four alternatives have said that this is the best approach for many reasons, but my concern and biggest concern as an environmentalist is to save the ecosystem, which is pristine above these dams and the Snake River ecosystem, to save especially the Chinook salmon, which are the, is the main food source. 80% of the southern resident orcas, the killer whales diet is Chinook salmon and they are essentially dying and the whales are too. So, I'm just hoping that we as a community can support that because the people that have whale watching businesses here benefit economically from keeping whales in the Salish Sea and around Puget Sound. So, thank you for your support of that.
Thank you. Great. Is there anyone else who is not signed up but would like to speak this evening? Feel free to head down to the microphone. And my apologies for not articulating before we started that it's a three-minute period.
Look at you.
Please come down.
My name is Les Shields and I'm a homeless. And today I was denied my concern to be killed. They even videoed me and drove by twice. Now I'm packing my body bags, you can put me in it when you find me. Is that fair for a homeless woman who's disabled? To have to worry about walking on the street in which she sleeps? They even stole my cellphone at the homeless shelter. They did nothing but put him out for a run in a vehicle. What about my cellphone that I paid for and the minutes and my identity theft that happened too? Will I get justice in my hometown? Just because I'm homeless. I chose to be homeless for one reason. I was paying to be abused in lonely huts. Want to go take care of that place, huh? It's supposed to be a secured building for disabled people. It's not secure. So, the people who live there allow them to be drugged behind closed doors. It's legal there. I was never safe there. So, I quit paying rent to quit being abused in Port Angeles. How about that? If you want to know where it's at, I can tell you. I used to work for, and I'm not afraid to say, I did it for my kid and my grandchildren now. Now I have seven of them. One in heaven and the last one was born today. Thank God. Maybe they'll have a better life and they won't have to go through what I went through for asking for help. But this town didn't help me. You might want to think about what you're doing to a disabled female. You might want to help her, huh? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, anyone else?
I'm Chad. I live in Port Angeles. I'd like to start by thanking everybody who's here. We've got a great crowd. I appreciate the work that council does. I know you all don't get paid very much for the work you do. I've heard Squim is about to ask for a tenfold raise in their, some of the council members. At any rate, I think the fact that so many people here is testament to the fact that they feel that they'll be listened to and I just want to acknowledge that. I did have a couple of things I wanted to say. One is, I was really surprised to find an item on the agenda that just says BPA or Bonneville Power Administration presentation. There's no details. There's nothing in the agenda summarizing what the presentation's about. There's nothing in the packet about it. It's just this black box and it just seems unusual to me. I know that quite a few of you are really concerned about public outreach. In fact, I was just talking about that. It seemed like some kind of breach of good public outreach to just put an item like that. Boom, there it is. It's one line. I probably will have some more to say about that item later on. I also wanted to update you all on progress with the climate planning process. I want to stress again how important it is, I think, for the momentum of volunteers that are working on that to be able to continue. And I want to underscore that I think that every task that the subcommittee that now may or may not exist going forward took on can continue going on with volunteers before consultant gets hired. And I want to make sure that that direction is given clearly to staff, that the, that fusion supply chain inventory definitely can go on with the volunteers they have. I'm part of the group working on public outreach. There's no reason our group can't continue working. And the group that's working on the inventory, there are some reasons that they probably shouldn't start the inventory, at least until the county chimes in. But there's a lot of prep work that they can do before that. So, I just want to make that clear, that you all think that that's important, that to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then let's move on to the consent agenda and I understand the staff has a note
So, Madam Mayor and Council, we do have a correction to the minutes. I believe it is on page E6 of your council packet. I may be correcting that in one second. There are two locations in the February 18th minutes where it should say motion failed and.
It's the bottom of page E6 in reference, in the motions that were regarding ordinance number 3656.
Correct.
Page 2 of 5 of the minutes of February 18th.
Madam Mayor, the motion should state that the motion failed 1 to 6 with Meyer in favor. The second motion, delay approval of the ordinance, motion failed 1 to 6 with Meyer in favor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I will read the consent agenda. City council minutes of February 8th and corrected, and minutes of February 18th, 2020 as corrected. Expenditure report from February 8th, 2020 to February 21st, 2020, an amount of $2,212,082.90. And the Parks Rehabilitation Commission appointment. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving right along, we do have a presentation from Bonneville Power Association and so we will do that now. And I can just quickly say that it was out of respect for making sure that we are being as fair as possible and we had a presentation not too long ago by Jim Waddell discussing Bonneville Power Association and as customers, wanted to give them an opportunity to give us a presentation as well.
Thank you very much. My name is Holly Harwood. You know, it says Liz is my colleague in regional relations at Bonneville Power and she wasn't able to come tonight, so I am doing the presentation instead. Thank you very much for giving us the time on the agenda tonight. I'm really just going to give you some information about Bonneville Power and the role Bonneville Power plays in the Pacific Northwest. So, what is Bonneville Power Administration? When I talk to people about Bonneville Power Administration, most people think that we're just another electric utility or if they know anything about us at all. And really, BPA is a federal agency, part of the U.S. Department of Energy. BPA was founded in 1937 and over the years, some additional responsibilities have been added, but the primary responsibilities BPA has, first responsibility is to market or sell the power that's produced at the federal hydro dams and that power in the region to customers throughout the Pacific Northwest, preference being given to public customers. So, we are public customers and cooperatives. The second mission of the Bonneville Power Administration is to build, construct, and operate transmission lines to move that power from where it's produced and move it to where it's used in the region. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Kind of coming, circling back to the hydro plants, this map shows the federal hydro plants are about 31 hydro plants or dams built throughout the Northwest by the United States Government, the Bureau of Reclamation and the Foreign Engineers. They still manage those projects. They provide about 80% of the power that Bonneville Power sells on the market. The remaining power mostly comes from Columbia Generating Station, a nuclear plant in Richland. A little bit of small hydro plants that we have contracts with to take their power and then some, so all of that power is all carbon-free power. BPA's power is mostly carbon-free. We do have to buy a little bit on the market and that power is not specified as to where it comes from, so we assume that it comes from fossil fuels. So, BPA Power is nearly carbon-free, but not quite. So, in order to, so I said four things. The two things for sell power, the first thing to sell power, the second thing was to build and operate the transmission system. The third thing is that in 1980, when the Northwest Power Act was signed, BPA also was given a responsibility to fund energy efficiency programs and go through our customer utilities. We fund an extensive energy efficiency program to reduce energy demands of things that you've probably seen through your local utilities, incentives to acquire cost, energy efficient appliances, install energy efficient lighting, those kinds of things are funded from Bonneville. The fourth thing that the Northwest Power Act also assigned to Bonneville Power was a responsibility to mitigate for the effect of the dams on hydro systems. So, BPA has a fishing wildlife program. So, it's 1980 when it started, it gradually grew. So, it's 2008, between 2008 and now, funded about $250 to $300 million worth of habitat restoration projects, habitat protection projects, hatcheries, hatchery production, those kinds of things due to Columbia to basically mitigate for the effect of the dams. So, those four things are the primary things that BPA is responsible for doing here in the Pacific Northwest. Unlike other federal agencies, I said BPA was a federal agency, but unlike the other federal agencies, BPA doesn't get any appropriations from Congress. So, that means that we have to cover all of the costs that BPA has and purse for all of the programs through the sale of wholesale electricity and transmission services in the region. So, I talked about the transmission grid. BPA has built a 15,000 line mile transmission grid traveling Northwest. The green lines on this map are the BPA transmission lines, the really thick lines are the higher voltage lines and the thinner line, green lines are the lower voltage lines, just because you probably can't read the key. The yellow ones up around Seattle are Puget Sound Energy Lines. The blue ones are Pacific Power or Southern Corner Lines. So, all of this grid is all interconnected, right? All, the system all works together and it's actually part of the grid that's connected from Canada all the way down to Mexico. And that becomes important as we think about what opportunities we have as a region as we move forward. So, I think I said 15,000 line miles about and about 75% of the high voltage transmission in the Pacific Northwest is provided by Bonneville. So, let's look a little bit more deeply at the electric grid. This is really a simplified version of the electric grid or kind of become opponents of it. So, you have a power plant, like I said, BPA doesn't actually own or operate any power plants, but you have a power plant that produces the power, then that power's put on the transmission system and sent. system and sent throughout the region to bring it to the local utilities, the distribution and substation utilities, or the distribution utilities to distribute that power to their businesses and homes in their service area. It's important because it provides an opportunity, having this grid that connects everything, means that we have a lot of resources that we can bring to serve loads throughout the region, and it helps to make sure that we can keep the lights on. Isn't it? If I think about it, I'll come back to it. So I said that BKA is a not-for-profit federal agency, and we have to recover our costs through rates. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the rates process. Every two years, Bonneville does a public review process where we go over all of our programs. So when we set rates, we have to make sure we can cover all of our costs. And what are those costs? Those costs are cost to operate the transmission system, to maintain the transmission system, to repay the treasury or the taxpayers for their investment that has been made in the transmission system, to provide funding to the Corps of Engineers and Bureau of Reclamation for part of the operations of the hydro plants, those federal hydro power plants that I talked about before, to provide repayment for part of the cost of those dams, to fund the fish and wildlife program, to fund the energy efficiency program, all of those things need to be included in BKA's rate. So every two years, we go through a process where we have a public process, we invite stakeholders, anybody who's interested, customers, environmental groups, others, to come in and talk to, we talk to them about what we're proposing to do, what kind of refurbishment work are we planning to do on the transmission system, what energy efficiency program is going to look like. We get their feedback and input into that process, and from there, we establish budgets for those programs. So as we figure out what the programs will we should contain, we establish budgets and do an initial rate proposal. That starts a formal rate-making process, a judicial process, with formal hearings and that kind of thing. And at the end of that, the rates are set by the administrator to recover all the costs associated for all those programs. Our next rate case will start in the fall of 2020, where we'll be setting rates for 2022 and 2023. We have contracts right now on the power side, we have contracts to sell power to all of the public utilities in the region. Those contracts expire in 2028. The contracts commit them to buy power from Bonneville, but we set the rates for that power through that rate-making process I just described. We're working really hard at Bonneville to make sure that we're controlling costs and doing other things so that by the time those contracts expire, we're still a provider of choice for electricity in the region, that our rates are competitive. This map shows you generations, so the blue, the circles show you where generation in the region are. This is not just federal generation, it's all generations provided by the Northwest Power Conservation Council. So circle showing where the location is, the size of the circle shows you how much energy that generator produces, the colors are what kind of resource it is. So there's lots of blue on this map, that's because we're blessed with lots of hydro power in the Pacific Northwest, so there's lots of blue circles. The red circles are coal plant plants. There's actually a pretty big red circle that for some reason is not shown on this map, just because it got cut off, but two that use there in Montana, but coal strip high, they're closing. Yellow circles are gas, there's some teal, kind of aqua-colored circles that are wind, and there's some orange circles that are solar energy. So what's the point of this map? Well, as you probably know, here in Washington State, we passed legislation last year called the Clean Energy Transformation Act. And the, that act requires electric utilities in Washington State to provide power by 2030, that is carbon neutral, meaning that they can buy offsets to offset any carbon that's in there, but it has to be carbon neutral. And then by 2045, it has to be carbon free. So that means that as we are trying to de-carbonize the electric system, those red plants, the coal plants are going to be the first things to go, right? Those have to be eliminated. The yellow circles, the gas plants, will need to be less relied on, and eventually 24, 45, not used at all to meet power needs in the state of Washington. So what does that mean? That's really a responsibility of the utilities that are serving people in the state of Washington. BKA is a wholesale electricity provider, right? We provide electricity to other utilities to actually serve those loads. So what does that really mean for us? It just means that there's going to be a lot of change in the utility industry, particularly in the in the state, coming up. Well, that's going to create challenges and opportunities for all utilities, including Bonneville Power. And I know that I don't, I think I've kind of been told some time, so I'm just going to say, we, we will continue to be working with our customer utilities and other policymakers in the region to make sure that at the end of the day, we can continue to provide safe, reliable, cost-effective power, meeting needs of the Pacific Northwest citizens, while meeting all of our environmental responsibilities and energy efficiency responsibilities.
That's it. Are there any questions from Council? Patricia, would you like to start?
Well, yeah, you just kind of made a comment, very three simple words that kind of threw me off, or actually two. You said you base rates to stay for competitive rates, but you're a nonprofit. I don't understand where the competition is and why, why we just say competitive rates when you're, when you're nonprofit.
That's a really good question. Let me answer that. So Bonneville has a responsibility to provide power to the public utilities and cooperatives in the region. But those companies do not have to buy power from Bonneville, they can buy power from anywhere that they want. So when we say competitive prices, we mean that the prices are in line with the power prices that they could get at other, other sources, so that they will want to continue to buy power from Bonneville. That's the answer to your question.
So are those other sources lower than BKA, or is that why they would go there?
No, what I'm saying is we are trying to make sure that by the time our contracts expire, and even now, that we have contracts that are competitive with the open market, so that there aren't alternatives that people would rather have than us.
Do you have other questions?
I think following up on that, could you explain some of the changes in the energy market over maybe the last 10 years or so? Because I know I stopped paying attention back in college 20 years ago. So I, I mean, Bonneville used to have like down like the rate that there wasn't competition, but in the last 10 years or so, there's been competition, is my understanding. Is that fair to say?
Well, so, yes, back a ways in time, but it used to be that really people didn't have any choices, right, about where they got power. And with, as the energy industry has evolved, then there are many other options that are available for people. So I, I'm not sure, really prepared to go into that in much detail, but yeah, there are, the world is different than it was 20 years ago, for example, but we've been living in this world for at least 10 years, probably longer.
Yes, I agree. Another question. Thank you so much for coming. And I, there was a comment earlier that there was only one line in our agenda. I look back at our October 1st agenda when we had Jim Waddell, who was speak, and we had the same, it just sat in the agenda, presentation by Monica, Public Utility District, Number One Commissioner Jim Waddell, there was no memo or anything like that. So I think that's not really a fair criticism, but this presentation is something that anyone can ask for a copy of. I wanted to know if you have any update on the Northwest or the Columbia River Treaty with Canada? Is there any more update on that?
Well, the Columbia River Treaty, as you know, is being managed through the State Department, so really they're the only ones that can comment in any detail about it. It was, I think there was a public announcement, so it was on hold. I think those conversations are beginning again this month. That's about all I can tell you.
And then, right now, there's a comment period over the Columbia River System Operation EIS invited to the impact statement. Is that the two-year review that you mentioned, or is that something else?
Yeah, that's something else. So that's an environmental impact statement reviewing the operation of the Columbia River System operations. In that EIS, which I think is out for a 45-day comment period that ends April 13th, so I welcome everybody to look at, have a look at it. For more information, you can go to the website for the EIS, it's crso.info. And yeah, that EIS evaluated several different alternatives for how the Columbia River System could operate, including breaching the Snake River Dams. And that analysis is available for anybody to comment on at this point.
So why, why is that EIS happening now?
The EIS is happening because it was time to do an EIS. And then there was also a court order from the judge in District Court, yes, in the District Court, directing the agencies to do an EIS.
So I'm curious about asset management. That's something I heart our city staff up in the block seats about. And I remember a presentation from Municipal Research Service Centers where I think City of Bellevue projected out maybe 70 years and found that their water reservoirs were going to need to be replaced by them. These are huge expenses, and if they kept their rates the way they do now, they'd have hit a wall once they did that. And so projecting out in decades is really helpful in that regard. So I'm curious how Bonneville, and maybe it's a question more for the core, but you're a wholesaler of its power, so I feel like it's a good ask. How, how far out do you project with asset management?
I don't think I can directly answer that question. I'm not, I'm not that familiar with our asset management. I do know that in both our hydro organization, which works closely with the Bureau and the Corps of Engineers, they do have a pretty robust asset management plan where they're looking at prioritizing figuring, and figuring out what parts of the power system to invest in, right? When BKA is investing, we're really investing mostly in the power system, that's what we direct fund to the Corps of the Bureau. The, there are other aspects, certainly of the dam, that we don't direct fund. And then I know in transmission, we also have, are really standing up a new robust transmission and asset management plan, where we're looking at the life of the assets and how, where, how to best prioritize which assets we're investing in now, given the status of their health and projections that we have. I can, if you have further questions about that, I can try and get somebody who can answer that more correctly, more completely, I should say.
Yeah, I mean, I think so, especially with dams. I mean, one of the things, we're very familiar here with the Yellow River Dams. And part of what caused, well, in my assessment, part of what triggered removal as an option there was the cost of bringing the dams back up to the standards they had to believe in based on their life and their life expectancy and all of that. And so that, that would be a concern to me with dams that are now, you know, I don't know, 80 years old maybe in some cases, but I'm just guessing here, I'm not familiar with the Columbia system.
Yeah, the first dams were built in the 30s, so some of them are pretty old.
Yeah. So as you probably know, when PUD Commissioner Waddell presented to us, he was concerned a lot about Bonneville's debt, and I was wondering if you could speak to that issue or, you know, what would you say in response to, to his concerns about the fiscal management of Bonneville?
Well, there's been lots of reports in things like Greenwire and others about Bonneville's financial health, and it's really been misunderstood, I think, that BKA actually has a investment-grade credit rating from Fall 3 of the credit rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch, and S&amp;P. We are a sound, we're in sound financial health. We put together a asset or a strategic plan, looking at our cost trajectory. So we're looking at it and saying, look, our costs are going up, and that is not sustainable. So we need to figure out how to manage that. We looked at things like how much cash we have on hand, how much, how much leverage we have in the business, and we decided that there were things that we wanted to do to change it, to, to make sure that we maintained the health of the agency as we move forward. That's all in our strategic plan, and we're implementing that strategic plan to maintain the health. But there were some people that were claiming that Bonneville was going bankrupt, and that's just not true.
So one concern, you heard it during the public comment, and I, you know, I share it as well, is the, the impact of all the dams on the Columbia River in terms of salmon and natural, and after the salmon runs, which even though they're down in Columbia, along the salmon that we have here in the Strait of Juanifuga and in the Salya Sea are from the Columbia system. And so, you know, this question of breaching the Snake River Dams is an issue that comes up. I don't think it's the preferred alternative, we EIS. What, what is it from Bonneville's perspective that would make breaching the Snake River Dams possible?
I'm not sure I'm prepared to answer that question. I guess I would, I might answer it two ways, but I'm not sure it would feel like I'm directly answering you, and I just apologize if that's the case. I mean, the issues about salmon and orcas and all that kind of stuff, I would refer you to Knoll Fisheries to get the science. They're the experts on salmon and orca science, and so if you have questions about how the salmon and the Columbia River salmon fit into the whole picture, I would definitely recommend that you go to Knoll Fisheries or the National Marine Fisheries Services also, they're known by both things. And then I think your other question was about whether, how the EIS approached the dam removal. I couldn't quite hear what you said, but the EIS does address dam removal as one of the options, evaluates it, provides all the information about how, what kind of improvements there might be for salmon or and steelhead, and also what the impacts would be on other uses like irrigation, navigation. So that's all in the EIS. I'm not sure if that's what you asked me.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think one of the challenges is a number of slides presented, and you mentioned as well, the importance of zero carbon emissions or greenhouse gas emissions. The reason we care about reducing greenhouse gas emissions is because of the impact of global climate change on, well, a number of things, but notably habitat for species. So if we're reducing greenhouse gas emissions in ways that are harmful for ecosystem services and habitat, we're not really looking big picture at, at the problem. So I think that's why a number of people talk about clean and renewable energy and not just about zero carbon emission energy. And so by changing the, you know, the goalpost, the goalpost being in this case for the Northwest, since we get a lot of power from big hydro, we can say, well, none of this is fossil fuel. That's easy, relatively easy for us to do in the Northwest. But the big goal should be how is our energy supply having the least impact on ecosystems and habitat of critical species? Not necessarily is it zero emission, because going for the zero emission goal, we could end up solving that in ways that could have really bad effects in other regards if our goal is really looking at, well, how do we maintain species health and ecosystem viability throughout the Northwest? So I think that's one of the concerns I have with the zero emission goal. I think that's an easy reframing for Bonneville and the Army Corps to do. I don't think it addresses the clean and renewable aspect and the larger goals that lie behind why zero emission is important. So I don't know, you don't have to comment on that, I just wanted to lay in on that. Because I appreciate that that's a concern of Bonneville, but also I'd like the framework to look more holistically at why is that a problem in the first place.
Yeah, just the only thing I want to respond to is really what I was referring to is what the state policy is and how those regulations are affecting it, but it's not really necessarily a Bonneville policy.
Thank you so much for coming out, because I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, Deputy Mayor Carr?
We have a lot of questions.
Yes. You know, public utilities are obviously something that all of us who live here in Port Angeles are affected by. And so one of the things that we deal with all the time, you know, every two years, right, our rates change. And we have to, to tell the public and ourselves, you know, repaying individuals here, some of us who live on pretty limited incomes, that their rates are going higher, and that it's people, especially in rural communities, who pay the highest price, who have the lowest incomes in the state, and yet are paying an astronomical portion for their public utilities. So I'm interested in hearing that you did talk about debt in one of your slides. So I'm interested in hearing that you did talk about debt in one of your slides. And then on top of that, because of the stand, the new, I would argue, rate standards from the state, at least in going in a very good direction, Lindsay, I think you pointed out some of the flaws in that, but at least a better direction than using, you know, coal power and gas power plants like Bonneville currently uses. Bonneville's going to be forced to get rid of those or find other power sources that I imagine will have a higher cost. So I want to see how in 2030, two years after our contract will be renewed, if we decide to renew it, what those rates are going to look like as, as Bonneville has to, is forced to transition to cleaner power and what those, what, what the plan is to ensure that our rates as a small public utility in a very rural place with low income people, how, how is that going to affect us and how is that going to affect our citizens?
I might ask my colleague to come up and help me answer that question. But let me, let me first address one thing. I think I might have misled you somehow in my comments. Bonneville Powers, we don't have any coal or natural gas in our energy portfolio. We sell only power from the hydro system and from the nuclear plant, with the exception of that very small amount that we get on the, on the open market. So the challenge is actually going to be probably bigger for other utilities in the, in the region who are relying on those coal plants and those natural gas plants to meet their utility or their responsibilities. So I don't, I think in some ways it may be more of an opportunity for Bonneville because we have a pretty clean energy supply. So looking ahead to 2028, when B P A has a pretty clean energy supply, it seems like that would make it a pretty attractive place to get energy from. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Marcus? Okay. I should have introduced my colleague, Marcus. He is our account executive for power here. So he works with the local utilities, so he, he's kind of the go-to person on power contract issues, so.
I just have one quick question. How is the, like, adoption of solar power along the West Coast really affected Bonneville Power Administration?
Well, I don't think, so far it really hasn't affected us too much. I'm, I can fairly quickly get out of my depth on this question if I'm not careful, so I'm just going to, I'm going to be really cautious here. But certainly there has been along the West Coast, a ton of solar energy added, particularly in California. And we're seeing lots and lots of solar energy being proposed and cited throughout the Northwest now as well. And that does present a whole different profile in terms of energy, right? So you have more energy in the daytime and less energy at nighttime. And that tends to be, you know, pretty well aligned with when people use power, so sometimes that's good, but there's, there's an awful lot that's now been added to the system. So I think it is a challenge and an opportunity, right, to figure out how to make all that stuff work together to be able to have a good, robust transmission system, not just transmission system. So I can't directly answer your question, but I would acknowledge there's been a ton of it in, in California and we're going to see more in the Northwest as well.
Yep. Patricia, go ahead.
I, I just have one, one thing that I was thinking about. And with hydropower, I, I worked on the dam removal for a while and stuff, but one of the things, well, one of the things that, when, when they constructed, 1911, they constructed the, the lower dam, but then in 1925, there was new technology and it was an arched dam. And it was going to bring more power and stuff. And so I guess my question is, what is the new technology that hydropower is looking at that has the potential to reduce costs because it's more efficient in producing power that might be beneficial to the, the users, the public as in, in lower cost? Do you see any trend in better equipment, better technology that's, that can be implemented in the future that might help save costs? Or are we still kind of going along, there's maybe the new technology is wind power and solar farms where we get those from other entities or, or something? But do you see anything in, in that way that we can look forward to or?
On, on the hydropower side of things?
Yeah, on the hydropower side of it, something that, that might be, hey, we don't need to have as many dams because we have this newer technology out that's increased our output.
Yeah, I, I don't. I mean, I think that for a long time, there's been talk about distributed generation and being able to have generation closer to your homes and things like that. But I, their, their battery technology is probably one of the things that probably is the next place is that the technology develops that will open up additional opportunities in the power industry. But I don't know that there's, one thing I could think of, and I wasn't sure if this is where you were going, is we are, you know, we always are trying to make sure that we are producing as much energy as we can with the water that we're using on the, on the dams, right? And so the Corps of Engineers has developed new turbines that were designed to, so that when the fish pass through the turbines, they pass as safely as they can. We try mostly to keep fish out of the turbines, but if the, if the fish do get in the turbines, these turbines were designed specifically to make that passage safer. And, and by coincidence, they also actually make more energy with the same amount of water. So I mean, that's one place where technology is maybe proving things a little bit, still a little bit controversial, but.
Kate? Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
So since you mentioned distributed generation, I was just wondering, in general, what percentage of cost is due to transmission and what percentage of cost is due to power? So like in the electric bill that our city, you know, the contract we have with you, what's transmission and what's power?
I have no idea. Marcus, do you have any idea what the answer is? We can get that, try and get that for you.
It's the ballpark.
So the behind the meter generation is just, it shows up as not Bonneville load. So when you're generating to your rooftop solar or whatever, it's just less than Bonneville. So there's no power cost you'd be paying to Bonneville. And then, like I said, transmission, you're on site, using it on site, so there's no transmission cost. It's not until you get to like bigger cog gen type stuff where you'd be talking to our transmission side about selling it to whoever. So most of the behind, what we call behind, behind the Bonneville meter that just stays within your distribution territory, it just shows up as not load to Bonneville.
I know that's due from your side. So when you're talking about.
I think he's asking, on our bill, with, yeah, with the contract with the city of Port Angeles, the amount of money we pay Bonneville, how much of it is power and how much of it's transmission?
Oh, okay. It's mostly power. Transmission is, I don't know, this probably had venture to guess is probably around 20% of your coal, 80% is power.
You can get that.
Yeah, I can get you an exact number or average, but yeah.
Thank you. Great. Mike Azal?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? All right. Well, thank you so much. Oh, you do have one more? No, okay. Thank you so much for coming. Thanks for your time, yeah, and your interest. Great questions. Thank you. All right. Let's.
Madam Mayor, we did skip, skip over late items, just staff does not have late items, but just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you. Any late items from council? Okay. Conveniently, it wasn't a huge slip up. I'm going to recommend that we do, if it's okay with everyone, I three, which is the Crown Transit Periodic Review of Board Composition, and then take a quick break and come back and do the presentation on the light ops building and move on to contracts and purchasing, if that's okay with everyone. I think it's nice to build a little break for people. And I think that item shouldn't take too long. So I'm mostly going to let Lindsay discuss it, but I just want to start it out by saying that every four years, the taxing district that we call Crown Transit has by statute to put together a composition board that is separate from its normal operations board. And so we, as a member of Crown Transit, because we're one of the jurisdictions, we get to appoint someone to that composition board. We appointed Lindsay and that board will decide what the makeup of the Crown Transit Board will be going forward. And there's some important things to consider when we talk about how that board looks. And it operates independently of our body, but whatever the decision that, that group makes will come back to us for essentially ratification. And then that's what the board would look like, I believe it would be in 2021 going forward. So Lindsay, if you would like to talk a little bit more about that, that would be great.
That was a great lead in, thank you. So I previously mentioned that there's some question about how we can compose the board of directors for Crown Transit as a public benefit transit agency, like issues around whether kind of citizen at large members could be part of it based on how the statute is written. It's really confusing statute. But what came up at the last Crown Transit meeting when we were talking about this, you know, and that this process started, was that city's squim representatives, so squim city council members, mentioned that they would prefer to see maybe just one council member on Crown Transit. Right now Crown Transit is an eight-member board plus a non-voting member who's a union representative. So the eight members, which is all we're going to talk about for this purpose, is two each from each of the three cities in Crown County and then two county commissioners. And so squim mentioned that Forks, of course, you know, driving to Port Angeles is a lot. So they're like, yeah, we'd be interested in that. And then I think the commissioners kind of suggested that they might be interested in as well. Usually only one county commissioner sits on a board or a committee or something like that. In this case, there's two. I suggested that we, as the city of Port Angeles, we're not interested in reducing our representation on the transit board. And maybe it would make sense for it to be five members, you know, two from Port Angeles and one from squim, one from Forks and one from Crown County. I assume that that is something that, you know, I, I think it kind of makes sense in that we do have the most member of like non-intercity routes. And, you know, Crown Transit's here, so in terms of their basic operations, or in many ways, like we interact with them and Shaleesh interacts with them in terms of like how are we going to do power for electric buses and that sort of thing. So I, I'm at this point planning to advocate for that. Now, it's very likely that as one of the four-member review, like composition review committee, I, I won't have a majority, but that's my intent right now. So I just wanted to get this on the agenda and have an opportunity to check with the rest of the council to make sure that that's a direction that people would like to see, that I'm not just representing the city's interests without checking with everyone and kind of what direction we're going.
If I may, since I was previously on the board, I would just like to articulate what I know you already know, but is a concern for me with the other jurisdictions requesting only one representative, is that by statute, there are some significant decisions that a board would make, just as an example, for lack of a better idea right now, the employment status of the general manager. That's a decision that cannot be made unless there is a representative from every jurisdiction at the meeting. And so my concern with the push, I, I understand why the other jurisdictions would like to only have one member each, certainly from a workload standpoint, that makes sense, from a trans, you know, getting into the meetings, that makes sense, and from a size standpoint, that makes sense. But I think it's really important. I think it's worth having that part of that conversation in that group because it potentially lays out the opportunity for one jurisdiction that doesn't agree with the choice or want to engage in the discussion, just not showing up for the meeting and then that decision can't even be, there can't be any action taken on it. Which is also why I would support your thoughts that, another reason why I would support your thoughts for having us maintain two representatives on the board so that we are always present for an important decision. And if there are obviously other thoughts or questions from council, be happy to entertain those. Anyone? Yes, go ahead.
Can it be that if there's a requirement that if they can't attend, they must send the, a delegate? I mean, is, is that an option if a delegate is sent, is sent if the main person can't attend, but the requirement is that they must have one person in attendance?
It's hard to, I mean, you can look at Oregon Legislature to see how hard it is to make people attend. But one issue is some of those rules are in Crown Transit's bylaws. And I think, I need to double check what ones are in state statute. So if, if we went with one representative from jurisdictions, I think we have to change the bylaws to get rid of that ability for basically a veto by a single member of a five-minute court.
Good. That's good to hear. Like, any other?
As the other member of the Crown Transit Board, I, I back that idea.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Should have said this when I.
That's right.
I do say that even if you do go, if it is supported and that you just move to one, I agree that Port Angeles maintains two because of the impact to the city of Port Angeles, like there's more impact to the city and, and that kind of deserves a larger voice in what's going on at the transit board meetings. So I do agree with that. Good job.
Nice. Anything else? Great, well, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Mike, yeah.
Uh.
Yes, go ahead, Mike. And then Nathan will come back.
I just wanted to support Lindsay's direction. And I would say to Kate's concern, that's a very real concern, and it's a flaw in state statutes that I don't think we can really fix. It's a flaw that exists in the current system. If one jurisdiction doesn't support something, they can not show up and do the same thing. So I don't think we're going to be able to solve that. Hopefully, the jurisdictions will play nice and come to meetings, which I think that this concern that they have that, you know, it's a hardship to come to meetings when they're so far away or have other boards of commissioners there on, hopefully this relays that concern on their end and we, you know, work together collaboratively, which I think would be a ten. But I support Lindsay's direction.
Thank you. And Senator West?
Madam Mayor and Council, just a friendly suggestion that we feel that Councilmember Schrum and Warren may ultimately be able to come to that meeting with a great deal of more authority if council was willing to make the motion in that direction.
Can you elaborate a little bit on what the motion might look like in order to, so we actually give him the right authority in that motion?
So what, I believe what we heard from council was a desire to, to move forward with, continue with two representatives from the city of Port Angeles at minimum, and if Councilmember Schrum and Warren take that position. And I think if council so moved that ultimately, Councilmember Schrum and Warren would have a very strong position as he arrived at that next meeting.
Thank you for the recommendation. Would anyone care to make a motion in that regard?
I move to, do what Nathan said. No, I move to allow Councilmember Schrum and Warren to go forward with his plan to, or to have two representatives for the city of Port Angeles during the Crown Transit Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for taking that extra time to represent us on that composition board. Okay, we will take a five-minute break and come back and have a presentation about an update on the light operations building. All right, well, Shaleesh, are you giving us a presentation on light ops?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to kick that one off, if I may.
Sure thing.
Madam Mayor and Council, I, I want to just express appreciation to the hard work that staff has done to really begin.
staff has done to really begin looking at the process of obtaining a new building for our light operations division. Ultimately, as a starting point, we wanted a building that was extremely conservative, without a lot of bells and whistles, but recognizing we needed a building that really fit the needs of that division, and one that really helped facilitate the success of that division's operations. Ultimately, we're extremely proud of the work that Public Works and Utilities has done, to recognize that we have a limited budget relative to this project, to respect the limited ability of our ratepayers, and really take an overall respectful approach to the design. I think Public Works has really done a great job accomplishing that this evening. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Thomas Hunter, who will introduce Shaleesh forth this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. I just wanted to mention something real briefly. You know, this project, really, for all intents and purposes, started in 1987. And I think that as you go through the timeline and you look at the incredible job specifically that Shaleesh has done in bringing so many pieces together and crafting a project, it's pretty remarkable. I will tell you, this afternoon, I had a meeting with Shaleesh where we argued over who was going to give the presentation, and he was briefing to me, you know, what we were talking about, and giving me some more intimate details, and he wanted me to give the presentation tonight. And after seeing what was put together and the quality of the project, the stage that we're at, I said, "Shaleesh, I want to make sure that you get the full credit for the job that you've done," and so that's why Shaleesh is presenting tonight, and couldn't be more proud of the work that you've done so far.
Thank you. All right, step right up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Shaleesh Shehre. I'm the Deputy Director of Power Systems with the City of Port Angeles and Public Works and Public Services Department. Today, I'm here to present the status update on the design for a building. We have a brief presentation that should be up on our screen momentarily. We have kept it simple such that we don't want to bother you with words, but we would like to answer any questions that you have about the building, why the building, what different features, what's the cost, lingering questions, impacts, rates, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll try my little best to answer as many questions like you have, and if there's one, give you the numbers and details, unless I'm absolutely sure about what those numbers are. So with that, we have an update, and I'd like to start that update with a little brief history of what that effort has been so far. And as Director Hunter mentioned, that this effort started in 1987, when a then-existing building in 24 West Front Street was declared surplus. And there was a reason why it was declared surplus, and that reason was, we wanted to consolidate all of the works' functions into Port York. As you know, at Operation Yard in 1710, we have all of Public Works' functions, all of other Public Works' functions, except for light operations. So with that being said, there was also a need of higher, better use function of that space, the downtown corridor that we can use for a better purpose, rather than having a lighting initiative facility right down in the middle of downtown. The third purpose, which was really important, that light operations was to provide adequate facilities. As we were moving ahead with time, as challenges was increasing, we were having difficulties managing day-to-day operations in that facility within that corridor. So with that, as you can see, from 1987, the next leap happened in 2006, 2007, when a fire, the property was surplus in 1987, but then canceled, and the fire was first identified in 2006. At the same time, we did realize that we do not have enough funds to go ahead and design, develop, construct a new building, and that's the reason a need of temporary housing was also identified in the year 2006. In the year 2007, we did make that sale for about $863,000, and a temporary location was finalized, which is the Port Angeles property at the Airport Industrial Park. And we did go with an initial lease of six months with an additional optional renewal of five-year terms, and those terms were a clean optional renewal. The reason for that was the first six months was to analyze, design, find out what it would take to build a building and construct a building which would adequately provide all the necessary support that the crew would need to optimally function in that building. And as you can see, this is a weight that I really want to point out, the retrofit and relocation cost. We spent roughly $250,000 in a facility that's not ours, that's really the summing cost. And as we were asked to leave that facility, currently, we own a different rental facility. There's no guarantee that we may not be asked to leave again, and as you can see, the cost of retrofit and relocation is a substantial one when you consider the overall budget of the project. In 2016, the city did purchase a van for the permanent light operations facility adjacent to the Port York at a price of 300, approximately $350,000. In 2017, the Port Angeles within notified that we would have to move out of that facility, the Airport Industrial Park, for better higher views at that moment that they had identified. With that, the hunt began for a new temporary facility. This is our second temporary facility since the property was declared surplus in 1987. We moved to the now current facility that we have, which is at 1734 West Ave 1, which was formerly the Atlas Trucking Center. During the same period, we did go out for a professional services agreement, and there were a lot of changes happening in Public Works during the 2017, 2018 period, and that professional services agreement scope did change a few times. But that being said, we did manage to go out, get a professional services agreement in place, and in May of last year, 2019, the council did approve the city management to authorize and sign a contract with Pro Engineering for our design services for our new building. Meanwhile, where we are right now, the current facility, the leased facility, we have five acres of paved surface. In those five acres, we have about 16,000 square feet of enclosed space, which is condition, and roughly about 9,200 square feet of covered space, which is non-conditioned and non-secure. This current facility is also not fenced all the way down, so it's not secure. We cannot use, even though there is five acres of paved surface, we cannot use because there is a conditional use permitted for environmental ecology, no exposure certification that is applied to that particular van, such that we cannot store anything outside except for vehicles. So vehicle parking is the only permitted use. While the handshake was happening between Atlas Trucking and us, the owner of the facility did mention that, please do not open the hood of your car in your parking lot. So that was the summation of what we can do in that paved surface. As you can see, because of that reason, we have an inventory, current inventory distributed at four different locations. The warehouse at our current facility, our old yard, our transformed yard in Atlantic Spring Substation. And that can amplify and exemplify the operational efficiencies and deficiencies that creep in because there are parts and pieces and equipment stored at different locations to complete one job. That being said, as I said earlier, that we'd like to keep that design status really simple, so you can ask me more questions that might be living in your mind. So right now, where we are at, we have completed 60% design, anticipated construction would start somewhere in late spring, early summer of 2020. Once the construction starts, that's when the law begins to be broken about a year after that timeframe. What we see now is we have about 1.9 acres of city-owned property adjacent to the Port York, on which roughly 19,000 square feet of enclosed space would be a new light operations building. I put together this slide, and I do understand that we cannot, Atlas Trucking compared the facilities, yet all these facilities have been built in a relative region. It also serves similar purpose. As you can see, Clough County 3 number one serves about 30,000 meter, metered customers, and the most recent facility, which was built in 2014, 2015, about $101,650,000 of 2014, $2015,000, spans about 41,000 square feet on a 14-acre campus. Now, it is worth to mention that this is one of their three campuses, there's one more campus in Port Angeles, and there's one campus in Forks, and as we speak, they are building really new campus in Forks. Mason County 3 also has roughly 35,000 meter customers. Their facility is really big. It is also one of their three campuses, and since then, they've consolidated two of them. The build cost was about $35,000,000 in 2011, $2012,000. City of Port Angeles Light Operations Facility, we have roughly 11,000 meter customers, and our facility is 19,000 square feet on a 1.9-acre campus. We are estimating an all-in construction cost of roughly $6 million in 2020, $2021. As I mentioned earlier, we, when we worked out our process analysis last time, this project was included in it. There is no additional cost impact or rate impact, or no additional new debt has been required to complete this project. With that, I'd like to show a little rendering in design. This is an architectural rendering of what the facility would look like. Going into a little bit of detail, this is actually a CAD, or in the 3D CAD model of our facility, looking from the west side, and this is what it will look from the east side. The orientation is north south. One of the things that I'd really like to stress is the simplicity of the layout and design. We have avoided any complex structures. This is a simple, narrow structure building with expandability in mind as and when if we can acquire more land surrounding that area. There is limited availability of land on all four sides, but this gives us the best option to expand, if we were to expand. But we have kept the layout extremely simple. It flows well for the functions of what we need to achieve, to go ahead and achieve that optimal efficiency that we've been talking about. And beyond the optimal efficiency and other things that a building that you own brings, there are other non-tangible aspects of it which is the moral, the amount of money that we'd be saving when people aren't walking back and forth under feet to go up on tour, making the tour somewhere else. We don't have a dry room today, which means when crews work for 18 hours in snow and rain and come back, they sit in that break room while they're just waiting to dry, instead of having the warm dry room, which is higher than ambient temperature, and that's very typical in such industries. So what we're trying to provide is a new basic facility that would encourage other light units to come apply to our place. As you know, that we are a little bit trapped with the number of trade crews that we have, and hopefully, this would be one of those chapters that would allow us to even make some headway in that direction. So with that, I'd like to thank all of you for firstly approving that project and the design, and also encouraging us to go forward with it, even though we are in that transition period. With that, I'd like to take some questions.
All right. Brendan, it looks like you have--
Yeah, I just, Shaleesh, I was just wondering if there was any, like, eco-friendly design attributes to the building, like water collection, wastewater collection, gray water kind of thing, or anything with that, renewable, tarmac?
So I might be speaking out of my depths here, but we would be referring to the Western Washington Hydrology model and designing our stormwater retention based on that. Cabs system would be installed, and this is a recommendation for a stormwater engineer to install a cab system. Outside of stormwater retention, we are also keeping an eye out on state funding. There's a, I believe, I can't quote the state senate bill, but it is in the house, it has passed, I believe, which would allow us to get a grant to install roughly 300 kilowatt solar panels on top of this roof. And what we'll do is, during the design of this building, we'll incorporate everything that necessitates and facilitated that installation. So those are the two things that come to mind immediately.
Any other questions, Council? Lindsay?
I was just curious about how it fits into the kind of site plan with the Corporation Yard and Ingress and Egress. Is Ingress and Egress from this building going out to B Street? Like, the current courtyard entrance, are we going to use Lordson Boulevard, or are we going to reestablish A Street?
So it's, it would be Lordson Boulevard at this point.
Charlie?
It's nice you can have it, everything incorporated right there with the courtyard, transform yard. Valley Street, will all that material go to this new facility, or will a lot of that have to stay at Valley Street?
It would have to stay at Valley Street. Unfortunately, we do not have enough space to consolidate a lot of that.
Two acres.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
I mean, of all, we recently saw a contract come back to the electrical, where I think the expected amount that the contractors would bid for, and then the actual amount was dramatically different in a very good way. So of all the departments that I'm concerned about being, you know, popular and wasteful building designer, I'm not concerned about the electrical department. So, I mean, if there's something that makes sense here, like, please do suggest it in the future of designing this building.
Thank you. It's fun to see the progress that's being made, and particularly when we look at the timeline, and obviously, some of us have been involved since we started, but clearly, this has been going on for quite a long time. So it's really exciting to think that, at some point in the next 12 months, this whole saga will be behind us. And I appreciate your thorough presentation, and really enjoy hearing from you about all the different things that were considered, and agree that I think this is definitely a good step in the right direction of making us a little more desirable place to work. So, so great, that's great also. Are there any further last questions?
I just want to say, it's a great prize. I don't see how you came up, that's even possible nowadays, but congratulations.
Great. Well, thank you so much. And we look forward to the ribbon cutting and tour at some point soon. Okay, let's move on then to the Lincoln Street Safety Improvement Professional Services Agreement. That's J1 in your packet, and it looks like Director Hunter, you're going to take that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I found it ironic that we started off the meeting this evening hearing from WCIA about claims and improvements, safety improvements, and so you have before you here a professional services agreement for the Lincoln Street Safety Project. I think it's important to note that this is a corridor where we have looked at some of the warrants, some of the near misses, and really looked at efficiencies as we move forward on this project. Lincoln Street is a pretty important corridor for us, and there are discussions that we are having as it relates to, for example, our transportation CFP, what are our priorities, how are we funding certain things. The important thing to note here is that we actually got a grant for the construction of this project. This project spans Lincoln Street from First Street to Eighth Street, and so we were proposing to leverage some TBD funding to go out for a design so that we can pursue construction for some really important improvements for our community. I think it's also important to note that through this project, it's likely that we will identify other potential issues in Lincoln, just because we will be going out there doing that geotechnical work, and starting to get a little bit more involved, or I should say, more involved than we were on our last, I assume, rain break. But definitely, this is a, this is a project that we're very excited about. The improvements include, they're not loaded to, establishment of bike lanes, reduced speed limits potentially, ADA accessible pedestrian curb ramps, crosswalk lengths will be evaluated, and potential signalization, including flashing pedestrian crosswalk amenities. I do also want to highlight the fact that this design is kind of two birds with one stone. It's a great improvement for our community. At the same time, it helps the city with its ADA transition requirements through the state. And so we're kind of achieving two different things through one design, and I think that it's always important for us to highlight those opportunities. So with that, I would like to request-- So with that, I would like to request that Council make a recommendation to award the Lincoln Street Safety Professional Services Agreement parameters in the not exceed amount of two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars and seventy-five cents and approve and authorize the city manager to sign to make minor modifications as necessary.
So good. Second.
Excellent. And look at this, that's the appropriate procedural. I've been thinking about this since I went through the thing. We often discuss items on the agenda before we've actually got a motion and without a motion, and then an item actually shouldn't come up for discussion. So while I appreciate that we always discuss the agenda items, this is the appropriate way and that reading the recommendations, great meeting for that. So with that, I will open that up for questions and discussion.
Just a question for Director Hunter. Does this still include a signal at Third Street or is it just gonna be a walk sign?
So I think that it's really important that signalization will be evaluated, but just like any other remedies that we would propose, they typically have an effect on the other remedies that you've already selected. So we would want to evaluate the signalization, but at the same time, that would have upstream effects on crosswalks and things like that. So the short answer is it will contemplate.
Any other questions or comments from Council? Well, I'm excited to see this. I know there are a lot of things that are gonna need to happen on Lincoln, but this seems like a really good start. And I'm glad to see that we aren't considering one of those bobble things that the, that we're, the rubbing eye, since that proved to not be very effective. I just thought it was an interesting tie-in. So if there are no further questions or comments, then.
I just had a quick, just a quick question is, so this work that's gonna be done, is it gonna be easy to, if we have to replace something, is it just doing the safety, the safety, safety improvement, sorry. Yeah. Is this all in areas that we don't foresee like having to rip up in the near future? I know, you know, when you lay down all those lines and stuff like that.
So in the public works, you never think you're gonna tear anything up ever again. You know, I think that we need to understand that this contract is for a design. And as we move forward and we evaluate our CFP, I think we're gonna have to ask ourselves some real policy level questions about our PCI and how we want to address that within the city. Ultimately, is this a project that we're gonna take forward to construction just as is without looking at other improvements in the area potentially? But I think we need to find some answers as it relates to how we're going to fix sewer lines, storm improvements and all these other things. So while the intent is to go to construction, we are in that iterative process right now of trying to spare CFP. So with that, I would say that is not the goal, but I can't say one-hundred percent of the answer.
Beg your.
Lindsay.
I'll just share when we were working on the Tenth Street project over in the west side of town, that city staff came to the council and said, hey, you know, there's a water sewer line or a water line that, you know, we don't need to replace now, but we would within the lifetime of that new pavement, should we replace it now or not? So I really appreciated that and I think that that's part of the reason why having good asset management, cross-reference between different departments within public works is really valuable because, you know, the line, I mean, the First Street Department Transportation saying, you cut the pavement once and that's the goal and let's not cut it, especially right after we really have the pavement. So staff was able to do that on Tenth Street and hopefully that'll happen here as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right, then all those in favor of awarding the Lincoln Street Safety Professional Services Agreement with parametrics in the not exceed amount of two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars and seventy-five cents and approve and authorize the city manager to sign and make minor modifications as necessary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much and thank you to staff for that. And now we'll move on to J2, which is on page J3 of your packet. Looks like this is also a public works. So pump station three wet well purchase. Director Hunter.
Thank you, Dave Council. So in December two thousand and eighteen, in the December two thousand and eighteen windstorm, the city had a pretty catastrophic failure of its pump station number three whereby the pump station was submerged with water and the equipment on the interior, which ordinarily would not come into contact with an effluent or rainwater, was submerged. The result of that was that city crews had to bypass that station and constantly maintain it in a manner that's non-typical for our industry. And that has caused us, you know, grief with overtime, being able to respond to issues with that pump station. Pump stations aren't designed like that anymore. That pump station was designed in nineteen sixty-nine. And so this contract, you know, we took the necessary amount of time to go through and look at a design and get kind of our ducks in a row. We've done that work. This contract is for purchasing, this is for us to purchase the wet well to replace that system with a more modern design and something that's a lot more sustainable and more importantly, not susceptible to failures like the one that resulted. So with that, the recommendation would be that Council award a contract to Smith &amp; Lovelace Incorporated, Lenox, Kansas for the purchase of a wet well-mounted pump station at the price of one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-five dollars and sixty cents, including tax and freight, and authorize the city manager to sign a contract and make minor modifications if necessary. If that happened, answering the question.
I hope that we accept the motion. Just a second.
A second to that motion.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions or comments, discussion? Right, well, I'm glad to see that we're making a choice that builds in a little bit of, I don't want to say redundancy, but security going forward on the off chance that we have some other kind of bizarre weather event in the near future. Yes, Lindsay, go ahead.
I was recently talking to a constituent about the combined sewer overflow that we had during heavy rain and how, well, would we just renovate that whole project and what happened? My understanding is that this pump station was a part of why we had overflow within the distribution system. And that fixing this is gonna help. Do you have more details about that or is there a little more to share on that?
I think, not trying to get too far into the weeds, there's two separate things that really contribute to the event that we had. There were portions of our wastewater system that have capacity issues during certain rain conditions. And it wasn't until just recently that the city started investing in wastewater modeling. And so we can't really take our collection system, or we haven't in the past been able to take our collection system and predict what will happen in heavy load situations. Number two, as the system was built out, and this is typical of the other two-hundred-and-eight forces in this state, the different design criteria changed throughout the decades. So the older portions of your system might have been designed and constructed for the two-year event, whereas the newer sections are designed and constructed for the fifth year event or whatever the best management practice is at that time. So you're always going to have some capacity issue in the older pump stations and the older transmission lines. That's kind of the second part. The third part was the sheer volume of how much rain we got and how quickly. And our deputy director of transportation would probably enjoy this credit and also not like his comment, but we've done such a good job with our storm system in the past while that there's not enough sediment to slow the water down in the storm system. And when that contributes into the sewer system, we're seeing heavier loading rates faster than we've ever seen them before. Lastly, we had some technical issues whereby the CSO project was constructed and it was thought of as the CSO project. However, the pump stations that pump to it from a control standpoint were not adequately modeled and addressed from a pumping rate. So there's a lot of micro improvements that we need to make on our end and we're actively working on those. And this is just one of those components.
Thank you for that very thorough and interesting explanation. And I mean that, that's always interesting to me to hear those details. Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Then I, and all those in favor of awarding a contract to Smith &amp; Lovelace Inc. of Lenox, Kansas for the purchase of a wet well-mounted pump station at a price of one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-five dollars and sixty cents, including freight and tax, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and make minor modifications if necessary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Great, then. So now we'll move on to council reports and we'll start to my left with Brendan.
It's pretty non-eventful for me. I did get to attend the Cloudon Transit Board Meeting. We chose representatives for a few different things. I was, I volunteered to be the representative for the Cloudon Transit for the PR TPO and also got, also volunteered to work on the financial board. I also got to attend the PR TPO meeting and that also went well. There's orientations, I believe, for both of them coming up. So just a lot more stuff to take in and, you know, chew on for a bit.
Thank you. Charlie.
Thank you. It's been, I've done quite a bit since the last meeting, Wednesday, I went on the nineteenth, I went on the tour with Steve and Norma to the Boys and Girls Clubs. My wife and I went and toured both facilities. I'd never been in Unit One, so it was pretty interesting to see what all goes on in these facilities. And what Norma said earlier was, she encourages people to go out on a tour if you haven't, I would really recommend that because that's some great programs going on, teaching kids how to just enter the workforce and how to deal with life situations. It's a really cool thing to go see if you're in one of the tours. Also, Mike French introduced me to the Board of Chamber of Commerce. I'm gonna be an alternate on that. Got to join in on their meeting, which is very interesting. You know, the chamber's just doing some amazing things in the city and I think they're part of the few chambers that actually make, not make money, but you know, they come out ahead, when all's said and done, to use that money towards other things in the city. Saturday the twenty-seventh, we toured Dennis Creek with Jim and Robbie Mantooth. That was very interesting. Actually, one of the people on the tour was Noel Norstrom, no relation to the department store. She's the new coordinator of Cloudon County Stream Keepers. She was very interesting to have on the tour, explaining things as the Mantooths did. Really neat to see all the, all the work that the tribe has done on restoring the stream or the creek and helping bring back some of the salmon. They are actually seeing salmon pooling in there. They reported that they've seen that. He's very, I would say he didn't have his camera the day that they were in there because he didn't need to take a picture, but great people. I would encourage anyone to go on that tour. Tuesday the twenty-fifth, Shore Pool Commissioners Meeting, I attended that. I didn't realize I'm gonna be a commissioner as well as a council member. Thanks for letting me know. I'm now a commissioner as well, I guess. So Steve gave his financial report on the pool. He discussed all the pool progress. Patricia and I were both attended. We're sworn in as new commissioners. The project's been underway for twenty-five weeks now, just time just flying by. It's scheduled to conclude approximately in June, July of this year. They're hoping to have it open by June, but we all know how the construction goes. But all the interior and exterior walls are complete, rough ends are close to being complete, so we should start seeing significant progress on the pool. And last but not least, Wednesday the twenty-sixth, attended Solid Waste Advisory Committee. This is the second part of maybe two more. We're going over the entire plan of the solid waste management plan. Really learned a lot, you know, I've never been involved in solid waste and I didn't realize how much was involved in that process. Might take a couple more meetings before all the planning can be finalized, but man, I feel like I'm in college again. I've been learning more stuff over the last six months than I have now. And there's a lot more to go. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. All right, Deputy Mayor Carr.
So one of the things I did in the last couple of weeks was I went to the NODC for a meeting on the twenty-seventh. And then it started out with a presentation from the Organic Seed Alliance, which is based in Chinatown, but they offer services to the entire Olympic Peninsula and beyond. And they're doing some really interesting work, especially, they talked about some of the loopholes in organic farming and sort of the history of how organic farming came to be. And then one of the projects that they're working on right now is propagating new seeds that have otherwise kind of been lost. And that historically, one of the roles that farmers had in communities was to preserve seeds that did well in their communities. And so they're really working with local farms to bring seed cultivation back into our local area. And one of those seeds is, I think it's called like purple flowering broccoli, but if you follow Chai's Farm on social media, he just posted a picture of that. And that is a regional specific food that you can find in Country Air and Sunny Farms and of course at different farm stands around that other farmers, not just Chai's Farm, but other farms around the peninsula are really getting in on making some of our food production specific and local to our area, which I just think is so, so interesting. Among those lines, there is an organization that has other chapters around the state but is getting going here in Cloudon County called Eat Local First. And they will have some events later on in the year that I'll make sure to update everyone on. But this is one more way that we can encourage our community to put money back into the local economy through buying from the local farmers. NODC has a couple of proposals out to USDA grants, including getting a fiber collective here in the area. And then they're also trying to work to expand, work with local farmers who are interested in expanding to be able to add new products or expand in local ways or branch out or, you know, buy other pieces of land to keep growing and to really be supportive of the farming economy. The local broadband initiative is also working on selecting a consultant and they are looking at potentially having another broadband symposium, which I'm very excited about. They also had updates from other cities and jurisdictions that were there. And one of the things I wanted to highlight is that the Sunshine Festival in Swim is next weekend and it will happen rain or sun. And so they really wanted to let people know that that's one way that we can support our local neighbors. Of course, there are so many other community organizations that are doing such great work. The other thing that I did this past week was I had the honor of touring the Peninsula Behavioral Health Facilities and really getting to learn more about the role that PBH plays in our community. And one of the things I was particularly interested in hearing about was the role that they're playing in youth services. They work with kids and youth. And then they also are one of the largest employers in Port Angeles, which I also thought was quite interesting. And it is so great to see a nonprofit that is really just able to help transform our community and to hear more about that.
Thank you. Brendan.
I remember council member French and I toured PBH and we were sitting down and chit-chatting and what is this was like? We really need to work on housing. I'm like, you mean for your clients, your patients? She's like, well, I was actually thinking for my staff, but yeah, my patients too. So, yeah, thank you. So I just want to emphasize that the motions we as a council made the last council meeting about the Resiliency Subcommittee and, you know, removing that subcommittee thing was not to control how the planning commission operates. not to control how the final commission operates, it was to remove the constraint that we previously made on the final commission. I'm happy to talk about that more, or kind of go through the details of the motions with anyone, and who knew you were all right about that. I also attended Cloud Transit again, along with Councilmember Meyer, who I'm really happy to have another Transit geek on council, where there's too many of us now, but that's not a bad thing. And this year, I am the Chair of the Cloud Transit Board, so we'll carry your grievances this way, and we'll see what happens. And also, I commend Councilmember Meyer for his diplomacy in getting on the Regional Transportation Planning Organization Board. I would say Cloud Transit was very lucky in getting buses ordered before the I-976 uncertainty hit, so I think the new buses are like kind of in the game process, and there'll be some new buses when we're up somewhere near this year. With the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, one thing that came out of that that the organization decided not to pursue was this little micro mobility grant that I want to follow up and look into, because it sounded like State Department of Transportation was offering to give some money to like bring a speaker or an expert and do like walk around and talk about complete streets. And I don't fully understand why the PRTPO didn't want to support it, but it's something I will look into, if we can do that without the straight costs. The Straight Ecosystem Recovery Network is another meeting I went to. Both of those are like quarterly meetings, and they just happen to be like back-to-back meetings, so yeah, it's kind of a busy meeting in contrast. The best part of the Straight Ecosystem Recovery Network meeting is a presentation by National OSHA, Department of Environmental Administration, Fisheries Staff, actually like ecosystem restoration staff, about a process they call continuous improvement, looking at streamlining our, you know, improving the rent process that these federal agencies or state agencies do with, you know, whether it's local governments, or nonprofits, or other folks on the ground doing restoration work, and how they can improve that based on feedback from the people on the ground. So, it was fairly theoretical, but I also felt like it hit a lot of the issues that I've been challenged by in this world of ecosystem restoration funding, where so much of the funds don't really go to actually doing ecosystem restoration, which the NOAA staff of the size was the actual on-the-ground work within habitats and changing the, you know, the treatment work, because obviously it's a restoration subject. Finally, today, before the council meeting, as the ultimate for Councilmember French, I attended the Homelessness Task Force. There is a vacancy on the task force for law enforcement, or criminal justice position, I forget exactly what the title is, and it used to be filled by R.W. Chief Vina, and the general feeling of the task force was that they went as on-the-ground law enforcement officer, filling that position, and the name that kept it going around was Officer Swift, so thank you. She's coveted on the homelessness task force. See, Sorene House Executive Director, Dr. Robinson, shared after the meeting, this letter from Ted Keller, who's the Department of Commerce kind of Housing Director, that's not his exact title, but more or less. And I think it makes sense for me to just read it, because it's pertinent to our conversation last week about shelters and kind of where we're at. Doc said that this is not unusual to get kind of this last-minute request, and the question becomes like, how do you do this with such a short timeline? So, this is passed on to Doc. It's from Ted Keller, Department of Commerce. Urgent, start finding out using new shelter funds. As you likely know, the Governor House and Senate budgets all propose significant new funding for emergency shelter between $25 and $53 million, and new funding for July 2020 to June 2021. Up to $13 million may be available starting April 1st, 2020, for use between April 1st and June 30th, 2020. Right? Yeah, use it right now, and it's critical. So, Commerce wants to engage immediately with communities to determine how this funding can be used to quickly bring some of the 10,000 people living outside right now into shelter. The specifics of this proposal are evolving as part of the legislative process, but if it passes, we need your assistance today to make it a success. The allowable uses of potential available funds would be subject to the final decisions of the legislature. That said, as a starting point, a discussion, please immediately consider providing feedback to Commerce on following it as soon as possible. First, Commerce intends to pay up to $56 per day per new shelter bed created. Is this enough to cover actual costs, and are there special cases or populations where more is ordered, such as homeless youth? And I'm sure Doc said that, you know, generally, they can provide shelter, there's less than that, but homeless youth or folks needing medically supported shelter, like wound care, that sort of thing, and potentially also elders need, it's a higher cost per day than $56 per day for that. Number two, Commerce intends to provide up to $10,000 in one-time cost per new bed created for acquisition, construction, equipment, staff costs, and other costs directly related to creating initial shelter capacity. What is not enough to lease or repurpose existing buildings for use as shelter? The concern Doc had was, how do I, how do I acquire and construct new stuff before June 30th, 2020? Like, that's just crazy. Number three, how many new net shelter beds could your community open by June 2020? Are local governments you work with willing to act like this is an emergency and make exciting and funding decisions, similar to as if this was a natural disaster and 10,000 people's houses were destroyed? I think that speaks for itself. Number four, how many new net shelter beds could your community open after June 2020? Number five, Commerce intends to require local matching funds. What is a reasonable match percentage, and should it differ between community types? Number six, how should allocations and contract terms be structured to promote the following? A, flexibility so communities can quickly open new capacities and creative approaches, refocusing commercial buildings, sanction camping, sanction camping, et cetera. B, minimum standards needed to promote safety and dignity. And C, fair use of funds between counties and cities. Next steps, this is Flotsberg. Number one, immediately begin local conversations about how your community uses the initial amount of shelter funding described above, so you will be ready to use available funding. Number two, contact Commerce for feedback regarding the above, or if you have questions. Ted Keller, phone number 360-725-2930. So, I think it was helpful to see kind of like what they're facing as shelter providers, and like, this is happening, and you've got to do it now. Obviously, the $13 million by June 30th isn't all of the between $25 and $53 million, that's in these various budgets, but it's a significant amount, and you know, Sorene House plans to try to move on this, and of course, cooperation with the city, and the county is part of what will make it possible, so I wanted to share that. And then finally, Sorene House and First United Methodist Church are opening the DROP. People heard about this? So, the DROP is going to be a center for youth and young adults up to 24 years old who are experiencing homelessness and want a place to go. It's going to be a place just to be, as well as a place to access behavioral mental health services, employment, education, and other guidance, and culturally specific activities. So, the DROP is opening this coming Monday, and this Friday, after the event that's formerly known as Homlessness Connect, I forget the name, the DROP will have an open house for the whole community. So, that's Sorene House's invitation of everybody, not just youth and young adults, but everybody's invited to come to First United Methodist Church this Friday from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and see what this new day youth center is all about. So, that was pretty exciting, and that center's going to be open basically from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. every weekday, and it's, I think, maybe, that's pretty critical for the community. So, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Mike.
So, I have the conference, the biggest meeting that I attended with the Lodging Act Advisory Committee, and I've just got a plan on updating everybody's next council meeting, and five months on the phone, so I'll pass for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Latricia?
Thank you. I attended the Marine Resources Committee, also known as the MRC, Marine Resources Committee. The big topic out of that committee is green crab of J-8, the applet color crab team, which is managed by Washington Sea Grant. In Cloud County, the first green crab was detected in 2017. It does, and can impact the soft shellfish. It contributed to the decline, where was that? Contributed to the decline on the east coast of their soft shell, commercial harvest there. But, so what is, what does this crab team do? Well, they have 56 sites for early detection. They partner with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, the tribes. They have monitoring sites. So, out at Neva Bay, they have a monitoring site there, where everyone has traps. They trapped 60 crabs. So, this year, they'll be beginning removal trapping will occur out at Neva Bay. They're also trapping what they call multi-age classes, so different age green crab, and the trap is being caught also. Pished, they had zero crab in their trap. Dungeonous Bay, there's four monitoring sites. The numbers seem to be decreasing out there. It's possibly due to trapping efforts, but in Squim Bay, they did detect whole, three full-sized crab that were found at the head of Neva Bay, so they called those, and they are free-ranging, so they weren't actually found in a trap. So, but the big concern about this is the surrounding other salish sea areas, specifically over British Columbia. Over in Soak, they found 1,310 green crab for every 100 traps. So, just across the way, they're having a major issue with green crab. Also up there at Drayton Harbor and at the Lummi, they're also finding a lot more green crab up there. So, what's next? Well, they'll continue to monitoring, they'll continue monitoring the locations, and then they're going to see how the numbers change. They'll develop, they'll develop a collaborative management plan if the numbers tend to, if they're seeing an increase. Shellfish growers have been catching the green crab by hand at times, sometimes also in deeper locations. Some of these where they're trapping it is not really in deep locations, it's kind of in shallow areas. They've also developed less expensive genetic testing, so they can kind of tell where the green crab is coming from. They're also, as a reminder, if you see green crab, it's illegal to have one. Don't take it with you. If you have your cell phone on you, take a photo of it, and then you report it. And I have a, you report it to, there's a webpage, I'm sorry, I don't even have that. Oh, actually, it's crabteam@uw.edu. So, you take a photo, upload it, and send an email, and report where you found it. They usually have people that respond to those pretty quickly, I guess. So, also, the Marine Resource Committee, the MRC, will also be hosting a table at the Celebration of Science and Technology Event at Bern Burton, I believe that's March 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00. They'll have a Boyosville Paramus Outreach Education at the booth. They're also searching for interns. They've advertised for three students for the spring position, and this is for MRC. They have three students that they'll advertise for the summertime. They usually look in somebody who could drive themselves, so, you know, has a driver's license. So, my next meeting I attended with Charles, the Shore Memorial Pool District, again, 60% complete for construction. They'll be hosting, they'll have a booth up at the home show. And at the meeting, we did approve pricing change for the new facility. Facility hadn't seen that price increase since 2013, very reasonable increase. It's increased by about 8%. Actually, they've got annual passos, which are still great, a great bargain. There were some design changes that occurred during value engineering, but then at the last meeting, there were some of those changes that were taken out that they put back in. Part of the Memorial Pool that the construction is, was the relocation of the Horizon House. They're at 100% completion for that move of that building, which was a good sign. My next event that I attended was the Prevention Works on February 26th at the Hospital, Child Care Crisis. Again, this is a big issue for Cloud County, not just Cloud County, but Washington State. Washington State lacks sufficient, affordable, high-quality childcare. Childcare access affects both Washington workforce, employers, and economy. Cloud County's in crisis mode. All of the, for Prevention Works, they have a website, and they list all of the childcare providers in Cloud County, and you could call them, and they're all full. There's very limited infant care for anybody. At the Lower Elwood takes infant care of the college for students, they take infant care. Out at Carlsburg, there's a facility out there that just expanded, and they're accepting infant care, but if you're working in Port Angeles, it's a long drive for you. But there's a, there's a childcare crisis here in Cloud County. We talked about, you know, what are the barriers? Why do you have this huge market, but nobody's jumping into the market to open new childcare facilities? This impacts the city significantly, since we're trying to encourage new businesses to relocate here, or we're trying to get businesses to expand, or those working families that need childcare. There is no childcare in this area for those families with children that are, you know, not in school or even after school care. I know the Boys and Girls Club is going to be opening soon, but they're, they don't take infants. They, you know, you have your after-school care, which is kind of their main focus, and they still have a waiting list that will probably expand what they can probably take. So, what were some of the barriers? Regulations, skilled workforce, the state is kind of regulating that the staff need to have early childhood education certificates, so you can't just have somebody, you know, a high schooler come in during the summertime and work with kids, they need to have an early childhood education certificate. So, you have higher skilled workforce regulations. Pay is minimum, so you want them to get this, this education, or this certificate, but still pay is minimal, it's minimum wage. Also, the lacking of existing infrastructure. So, there's no buildings in Port Angeles for rent that's affordable that would house a daycare facility. That's, that's a huge one here in Port Angeles. It's too expensive to construct new infrastructure. So, as the economy grows, we want new businesses to locate, talk about that. Some of the solutions that they suggested for kind of your older kids that are like in middle school, or maybe sixth grade, fifth grade, is you can have a family-friendly work environment where you would allow kids to come in, and set up like a homework study site for them, like set up a room. They said, this hotel did this. This hotel manager was having problems because they couldn't find after-care support for their kids, so he set up a homework site for them. So, the kids would come to the work location, and they would go directly to the homework site while their, while their parents were still working, and they just did their homework and whatever that they did. Also, employers have instituted allowing, bringing infants to work, infants to six months, and some of those employers found that there was actually an improvement in the morale in the workplace when you had infants. Actually, Lower Elwood did this. Actually, Lower Elwood did this and still do this on occasion. They allow infants to come to work and mom or dad has them in a snuggie and they have a little playpen off to the side, so when they're napping, they can be put in there. So, there are some things that employers could do and implement to help during this childcare crisis. The other last event that I went to was Celebrating Women, an Empowering Women event hosted by the Seraptimus this last weekend. It was a great event to see two single parents going to college, struggling to make ends meet, get awarded for their hard efforts and that they continue to fight the fight and empowering women to continue to be successful when odds are stacked against them. So, that's what I've been doing.
Thank you. Thank you. I have to start by saying that the Law and Justice Committee was something that I've been really interested in. I was on it for two years and we never met. And I, I want to be on it, I wanted to be on it, I kept myself on it when I was looking at my workload thinking, well, we never met. And a week after we did council, I must have noticed that we're having a meeting. So, we are going to be meeting more regularly, but I think it's going to be really useful. We just had sort of a sit-down and let's hear from everyone what they're interested in, and the consensus at the last meeting was that we are going to at least tentatively move forward. At our next meeting, we'll have a presentation by County Prosecutor Mark Nichols about what it would take to establish a mental health court in Clallum County and, and then have some discussion by the people in the, on the Law and Justice Council about how we might be able to support that as a community and whether we have the infrastructure in place to make that successful. So that's kind of exciting. Also had a FERO meeting. The big thing we're talking about there right now is the fundraiser that's coming up, making waves on the 21st, and that's at the Sunland Golf Course if anyone is interested. And then I also had the opportunity to attend Red Set Go, which is always a fun event, fundraiser for the Lubbock Medical Center Foundation. And the, the foundation invites nursing students, so I got to go attend with them. And then the last thing I want to bring up tonight, if you guys want to email me, I worked, got super busy for probably fairly obvious reasons in the last week. And this, I had intended to ask for a table and I don't know if it's too late to do that or not, but if other council members are interested, I am planning on attending at least for the morning, the Community Resource Connections event at Burn Burton. It starts at 9 o'clock and I feel like being there is just another opportunity for us to, like the farmer's market and other places, there is an audience that we may not generally have an opportunity to interact with on a regular basis, and so I would like to go and hear from them. And so if anyone is interested and available, enjoying me for summer, all of that, please let me know. You can call me or email me. And I will end there and turn it over to City Manager, of course.
City Council, just want to update you on a number of things this evening. As I promised to do, I want to put in a plug again just for completion of your census forms and cards and just encourage everybody that you talk to about how important completing the census is for the city of Port Angeles and the services provided to our citizens. In addition to that, I wanted to share with Council that next week I'll be the presenter at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. It starts at 11:30 AM and that is a Wednesday afternoon, or starts Wednesday morning, goes into Wednesday afternoon. I'll be doing a presentation on the state of the city and I'd love to have council members attend. Please let us know and we'll make sure that you get registered for that luncheon. In addition to that, there have been a great deal of staff-related conversations to really focus on a response plan for operations relative to COVID-19 and making sure that we're well-prepared, making sure that we're engaging our partnership agencies in the community, but ultimately well-prepared, as well as educating our employees about common sense initiatives such as staying home if you're sick, if you have symptoms, to make sure that you're not coming into the workplace. But ultimately, we are really focusing on making sure that we have awareness of our comprehensive emergency management plan as well as our continuity of operations plan, both of which are pretty important documents for us. Clallum County has opened their EOC in order to support the county health officer, making sure that they have lines of communication for health-related questions. And then at 4:30 today, they did provide an update, and I think it's important to pass along from that update, that there are no known cases in Clallum County at this time. Additionally, that it's been estimated that the virus has been in existence for about three weeks in King County. And then finally, just knowing that there are resources being distributed to local organizations through the help of the Clallum County EOC. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Dubuque and Chief Smith to see if they have additional information they'd like to add.
So primarily, I think it's just good for you to know that we have been for quite some time taking precautions dealing with patients of this type. We do with sick patients all the time. So for us, this is sort of a business-as-usual sort of deal. There's certainly an increased awareness of the issues that's going on. From a first responder standpoint, we're prepared. We've certainly been trained to deal with this. We know how to deal with patients that have infectious diseases and we do that relatively frequently. So from our standpoint, it's, it's something that we're definitely prepared for. But if we were to pass along any information, the primary thing is just typical, good, common sanitation practices that you would take for any other sort of flu or infectious disease. So washing your hands, covering your cough, cleaning your workstations, cleaning areas, just typical things. The virus can't exist outside the human body for more than a couple of hours, so it's not a particularly persistent or resistive virus. So really just general common sense precautions are what we would say. If you're asymptomatic, just go to work, go to school, live your life. If you develop a cough from a respiratory infection or a fever, then the best advice is to stay home. Basically, self-medicate, take Tylenol, drink plain fluids, and that's really the best advice that the public health authorities are giving at this time. And if you have any other detailed questions, there's a ton of information that's out there. The City Manager West put out, the Clallum County EOC and Dr. Unthank are putting out an informational bulletin basically every afternoon at 16:30.
So, Council, I can just, you know, just reinforce what Chief Dubuque said, that, you know, paying attention to what, what the actual facts are is really important in this situation. And as far as we can see from the information, all that's available, there's no transmission from asymptomatic people. It's really important that, that you have to be symptomatic to transmit the disease, just like other viruses and flu. We, in law enforcement, also, you know, we have exposure protocols, we have protocols for using personal protective equipment. This isn't really that different for us. And we're probably going to see an increased emphasis in our workforce on people really staying home when they're sick. And if you have any symptoms at all, staying away from the workplace and other people. As Chief Dubuque said, the EOC is going to be publishing really good, really good information, you know, it's relevant to the community and there'll be a webpage attached to that. I think this EOC process of supporting public health officers is a very, very good way to go. And it's hard to predict the future, but another important fact that I've gleaned from this is because of the lack of testing worldwide of everybody, like people that are symptomatic that recover, you know, which is roughly 80% of the people, they're not being tested. So, the estimates of the mortality rate don't include all the people that had the flu or COVID-19, if you follow that. So, you have to, you have to, you know, when you're, when you're thinking about the risk, you have to think about that, that the entire population that's possibly has been exposed and symptomatic hasn't been discovered yet.
Mayor Dexter, if I may, there's two social aspects of this that I've worth mentioning. One is where are people getting information from? There's a tendency when there's, you know, in a public health emergency for people to get information, you know, like I got forwarded an email, this is advice from an expert. And there's already some documents out there showing that scammers are using email circulation about like, here's where to click to get more information, and that's actually malware or some kind of nefarious scamming or, you know, spear phishing attack. So be careful about getting information. The Department of Health or our state has a page, the Center for Disease Control nationally has a page, the World Health Organization has a page, all under the virus. And that's where to go to get reliable information, not from emails forwarded that have links or attachments to them. Go to open those, those are likely spam. And then I think the Department of Health says it best in one of their pages, and what can I do to help? And this is another aspect of it that we should all be mindful of. So just to quote them, "The news of this disease outbreak is concerning to all of us and especially impacts communities who have family or close connections in China or the greater Asian continent. We should all do our part not to make assumptions by discriminating, spreading this information or harassing individuals, families, and communities that have made Washington their home. Just because a disease originates within a certain area of the world does not mean that every person who has an association with that country is ill or has the potential to contract the virus."
Thank you. And Nathan, are you, do you have more?
I was going to share a similar thing from the Department of Health.
Okay. Okay. Well, it got shared, so that's, that's right. All right, so also the Clallum County website, clallum.net, will have a link to a page that is specific, that is Clallum County-specific that will be updated regularly with information. And so, if you want local information, that will be, include the kind of information that's being distributed on a daily basis through the EOC. So, that brings us to our second public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? If so, same rules apply. Three minutes and please state your name and whether or not you live in the city. Thank you.
Hello, it's Ed, we're in the woods. Thank you for the good discussion, good questions. It's, I'm proud of our answer. I'd like to underscore a couple of points subsequent to the Montville Power Administration presentation. First of all, noting the state law that Holly Harvard had talked about, the Clean Energy Transformation Act, that's a good thing because it's going to help all localities, including the city, to meet our goal to become carbon neutral and carbon free eventually. So, we're helped by that and it's almost, it's almost a nine will be able to check off. Within that, I appreciate Councilmember Sean Warren's comment about not only renewable energy but clean energy. And I think there's a tendency for us to assume that if the energy doesn't involve coal or oil or natural gas, that it's going to be clean. And as was pointed out during both comment and some of the discussion, that's not the case. And in particular, I want to, I want to underscore comments made by Jim Vanderhoof earlier, that there's a pretty direct connection between our Southern Region of Orques and Chinook Sand coming right out of the Columbia River system. They're very dependent on Chinook Sand in particular, and that system is one of the main sources. And along the Columbia River system, the greatest roadblock to significant recovery are the four lower Smidler dams. They provide a fairly small amount of electricity. They've been problematic since they were built. Their operation maintenance costs are rising, they lose money, and at this point, they would be much better to be off the system and replaced by truly clean energy. I realize that we're just a customer, but something to point out is that all of us, I think, in our daily lives, try as customers, as consumers, to think about the upstream and downstream impacts. And I'd love to see the city try to cooperate with other power buyers in the region to try to put pressure on the system to get us to be clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? All right, then seeing no one else, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.